We'll call this Tuesday, August 24th, 2021 Reno County Commission Meeting in order. At this time, we'll have the American flag allegiance and also Pastor Steve Gill from Turon Community Church has called in and will give a prayer this morning, so let's stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Gill.
Okay. What is prayer? Dear God, my Father, I thank you for another day. I thank you for those gathered today who will be going about making decisions that affect our county and our lives. I pray that you will guide them, give them wisdom, direct their path both as individually and as a group. Lord, I especially thank you for their willingness to serve when so many are unwilling today. Lord, these are troubling times and you know that and our emotions are very close to the surface in so many ways. So today I pray that your grace and peace may be upon this meeting and all those involved and may everything they do today honor you in Jesus' name. I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Gill.
Good afternoon, thanks.
Hopefully I have it off. But this time on the agenda, we'll have a COVID-19 update by Carla Nichols, the Health Department Director.
Good morning, Carla Nichols, Director of Public Health. So just to update you on some COVID numbers. So as of yesterday, we've, we have 8,554 total cases. We have 330 active cases. The number of Reno County residents that have received at least one dose is 27,795, which is 44.51% of our population. We've had 145 deaths and one of those deaths within the last 30 days. Our 14-day positive test rate is at 17.51%. As far as hospitalizations, after I'm done, I'd like Chuck to come up from the hospital and he'll give you a hospital update also. The biggest thing that we're working on with the Health Department right now is our back-to-school immunizations with all of the schools. The nurses will be going back out to the Reno County Jail this week and to Tyson. And then we've got some back-to-school and some immunization clinics coming up in the school systems and with a lot of the communities. There was a press release last week, just to clarify, to make sure that the residents understood what was coming out in the media for the additional dose versus the booster dose when it comes to the COVID-19 vaccine. The additional dose, which is authorized right now, is for those that are immune compromised, maybe have a weakened immunity, those individuals that have had like a heart transplant or some kind of transplant or undergoing cancer treatments. They're thinking that it's best for those individuals to have an additional dose at this time. What is coming, what they're talking about, what came out of the news that the White House is thinking around September 20th, that we will have authorization for a booster dose. A booster dose is a dose that's in addition to the two series that has been authorized already. So it'll be then a three-dose series or a booster dose during this time. We're thinking that they're going to time it with the flu shots, so we're kind of planning ahead on that one before the FDA and the Advisory Committee of Immunization Practices authorizes that. So right now, we're in our planning stage to start planning for that. We do have meetings with the rest of the medical collaborative on what that's going to look like, meaning that a lot of us will be ready and available to provide those vaccines. But they might be timing that with the administration of the flu vaccines, so we might be doing that at the same time. So that's what we're looking at. Any questions before I have Chuck come up?
Well Carla, the booster dose that hasn't been authorized for well people yet, wasn't that so many months after you were fully vaccinated?
Eight months.
Eight months.
Eight months.
And that's what you're planning for?
Yes, that's what we're planning for and making sure that others in our community are planning for. So once that authorization is ready, we're ready to provide those vaccines to the community members that would like them.
Is it my, also my understanding that if you've had the Pfizer shots before or the Moderna shots before or the J&amp;J, which isn't Moderna and it's not FDA-approved for the booster shot, but you need to stay with those?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Pfizer will stay with Pfizer, Moderna will stay with Moderna. Yes. Chuck?
Morning, Mr. Chuck Wells, Vice President from Hutchinson Regional Health System. So as of today, the hospital has 64 patients in the hospital, total inpatient population. We have eight positive COVID patients. Two of those are in the ICU, five of those globally are receiving some sort of ventilator assistance, so mechanical breathing of some sort, whether it be externally or internally. Updating you on the stats that I gave you last time, we've seen a total of 88 COVID-positive patients in the hospital since June 1st. Our breakthrough rate, unvaccinated versus vaccinated is still, continues to be around that 10% mark. Moreover, the unvaccinated tend to be the ones that receive that mechanical ventilation. And so the moral of the story continues that if you end up seeing us at the hospital unvaccinated, your stay at the hospital will be much more severe than if you're vaccinated, if we see you at all. So that's the stats I have for you today. Is there questions or?
Is the, at one of our earlier meetings, I believe it was you suggested the use of Regenovin, I'm not pronouncing that correct, as a quick help for a lot of people. Is that still being actively used within the community?
Right, and we actually have the monoclonal antibody expert here in Dr. Polly. But again, yeah, the monoclonals are the proteins that jumpstart the immune system and we are seeing, and Dr. Polly can speak more to that, but we are seeing fantastic turnaround with that. If we can get to them early, get that infused, and I know there's been discussion about some subcutaneous delivery. I certainly don't, can't speak to that. But yeah, that remains, if that's what you're speaking to, that absolutely remains an option.
Chuck, the statistics you reported, I thought I heard Carla mention that maybe there was going to be a dashboard that either the hospital was putting up.
Yeah, and so what we're trying to do and get better at in full transparency is give not only you, but the public a snapshot of kind of where the hospital sits from a COVID-19 standpoint. And so we have created a dashboard, it is up and live now, it's on our Facebook page, it's soon to be up on a billboard. We're going to report on that once a week. So every Monday, we'll update the current status, it won't be cumulative, we're just going to try to make this as easy and simple to understand it. So that, that day, when it's, when you see it, that will be the current status of COVID in the hospital. We have total COVID patients, we have COVID patients in the ICU, and we have COVID patients receiving mechanical ventilation. Each column will be unvaccinated versus vaccinated. And as this surge continues to get worse, as we enter the fall and winter months, I think you'll see those numbers really start to separate in vaccinated versus unvaccinated. Again, the moral of the story is if you get vaccinated and you end up in the hospital, it's going to be much less severe than if you're unvaccinated. That's what we're saying holistically.
If you, if you watched the Sedgwick County conversation last week, there was significant comment from the local hospitals on their capacity issues. Where's Hutch Hospital at right now on its capacity?
Well, we still continue to battle the staffing issue and today, unfortunately, we're full. We have no more capacity and not from a bed standpoint, but from a staffing standpoint. So last week I, or two weeks ago, I reported on how odd it is to be on full diversion. And oftentimes we'll go on trauma diversion or in particular, but we are on, currently on full diversion.
What does, what does that mean? Because I think we've heard different terms like diversion, full, critical. If someone is hurt in a car accident today, with you being on diversion, what does that mean?
We have to get you to the nearest, nearest accepting facility that has staff that can take care of them.
So you don't, if someone were to be injured in a car accident today, you would not accept them as a patient?
We can't, we can't. We have no staff to take care of them. We actually have, unless we have a discharge, I will say this with a caveat, that this changes, it can change every 15 minutes. It just depends on if we get discharges and right now, I do know we have a patient waiting for a bed in the emergency department.
So, and just to clarify, you will treat them in the emergency room?
Yes.
It's just you don't have the ability to keep them overnight?
Right, to accept them in-house. We can even, in certain circumstances, hold them in the ED as long as we possibly can and treat them and take care of them as long as we can until we can find them a bed somewhere else. But that is the current status right now and it is staffing-related.
And what are you, what is the hospital doing to relieve that issue?
So we have several recruiting firms contracted. We have increased pay above standard, we're on par with the nation, the current nation right now. We're offering incentive bonuses, moving expenses. We've really gone to the mat, pulled out all the stops.
Is it working?
To date, we have had a couple. But it's, we need more.
A nationwide situation?
It is, it's not, unfortunately not specific to Hutch. And last, last week I spoke to this, this perfect storm of nursing challenges and that we're in this cycle. We have a pandemic that has burned through a lot of our best people and then we have a very competitive environment with traveling companies offering three times, four times what they would make typically with huge $20,000, $30,000 bonuses and, you know, 13-week stays anywhere they want, from the Bahamas to, you know, the East Coast to you name it. So it's just a challenging situation. We're doing what we can.
Carla, I have a question for you on the 14-day positive test rate at 17.5%. And certainly I'm not, don't pretend to be an expert on this, but that's a higher percentage than Sedgwick County's even having at this point in time, is it not?
I think last time I looked, I think theirs is 9%.
Nine or 10, and I think I saw something that theirs might be leveling. Have you seen any indication of leveling?
No.
In Reno County on that positive test rate?
No, no, because typically the ones that are, typically the ones that are testing are ones that are systematic. So basically your, your test rate is going to be higher. If you remember last year, we were doing a lot of people that were systematic and asymptomatic. So you had more testing being done. Now the testing is more specific to those that probably have symptoms, so your test rate is going to be higher, unfortunately. Are you guys okay if Dr. Polly gets an update? Or, I'm sorry, sorry.
One thought.
Oh, yeah.
I presume with your association with the CHA group, they are a benefit too to try to help when you get someone interested.
Yeah, well I mean, we're, we're working on childcare, you know, offering free childcare through the hospital. We're, we're just really thinking as far outside the box as we can, as we can think. So it's, and I, I don't know if this is a situation that we'll, we'll fix today or that will end today. It's going to be something we have to think for the next 10 years.
Is this a matter of money?
Well, it's a matter of a moving target on these salaries.
But if we were to pay more, would that resolve the issue?
Yeah, I do think so.
Do you have?
Some states as well have, have passed mandates that if you're going to be a traveling nurse, you have to travel outside the state. We've seen as nurses resign, go sign on with a traveling company and three times the cost and then come back and try to work for us. And so other states have said, well, that's fine if you want to be a traveler, but you have to travel outside the state to try to discourage some of that. Or we haven't yet to do that, but those are some other things.
We have $6 million in a bank account for COVID relief, but we haven't spent any of it yet. I mean, if you have an idea on how to use some of that money, you should ask.
I will. Might I do?
You've got to get open up the checkbook.
No, if, if we had a work offer to go to now, I mean, we're, we're at war. So I appreciate that consideration.
I'm not sure what they think, but that's my opinion at least.
Well, but Chuck, haven't you lost some of your staff just to being worn out and not willing to day after day do what they were doing prior? So it's not all a money issue?
No, of the three prongs that I spoke of that are kind of congealing to make this, this holistic problem with nursing, money would fix one of them. But there is a burnout piece that, but of course, if we had adequate staffing and even bench players, we could relieve some of that stress that the others are having to, to endure by picking up extra shifts and filling holes and gaps. But just the, the taking care of a COVID patient is three times harder. You have to dawn PPE and then, you know, we'll, we'll show you that, but it, you know, a paper where you can't breathe, if you have glasses, they fog up, you can't see, you're putting on sometimes two and three gowns with double gloves. So just the physicality of doing that labor with all this stuff on is in and of itself. They go home after a 12-hour shift, two or three times as tired as they would just working a normal shift.
Chuck's going to give me a tour on Friday, so.
I think you offered early on to give any of us a tour, so your offer's been there for us for the duration of this.
It's certainly nice you have the new facility out there to handle the intense cases.
I will tell you gentlemen, my wife asked me, if you get COVID, what do you want me to do? And I said, send me to Hutchinson. They have a state-of-the-art ICU, we have four pulmonologists, so the, the critical COVID patient to pulmonologist ratio is much better here. We have a fantastic health system. And I said, drive me, drive me to Hutch and put me in the hospital.
ICU is, as you say, state-of-the-art and efficient as can be possible.
Yep, we have all the bells and whistles that they have in the, the big cities. We just have better touch. You know, we don't have 15 to 1, we have 3 to 1. We have guys like Dr. Polly who are, you know, cutting-edge primary care practitioners who are up to speed on all of the MABs and all of the preventative-type stuff. So yeah, if we could just plug that nursing gap and other skilled areas, we would be, respiratory therapists, there's, there's others, but nursing seems to be the primary one, so.
Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Chairman, I think Carla asked if Dr. Polly could speak, I think that would be great. I, I had a question just following up on conversation from two weeks ago related to what we're doing for schools and quarantining. It sounds like some, some work has been done on that and I don't know if Dr. Polly would be the right person or who, but it would be good to get an update on that.
From a little bit of that standpoint, Carla, we talked yesterday with regarding to the, what do you call that, the test and, and learn? And that program has some possibilities and I don't know how deep you want to go into that, but from a school standpoint, that is an option. I'm working and also to help the Health Department gather data.
Do you want to come up and talk with it also, Dr. Polly? So KDHE did put out guidance as far as different, different testing options for schools. And on their guidance that, that KDHE gave was that in partnership with the local health department, schools may adopt plans that allow exposed students to remain learning in-person and participating in other school-based activities in-person during their quarantine period if they participate in the approved testing strategy. So Dr. Polly has graciously been working with us and with different schools on giving them ideas, options on these different options that KDHE has provided to those schools. So a lot of, a lot of the times when our guidance goes back out to schools, it goes back to our normal mitigating measures. First and foremost, we want people to get vaccinated. That's, that's the biggest thing out there. We are going to schools if they request it, we're going to cities if they request it to provide vaccine clinics. Second, if you are ill, please stay home, please get tested. And then if there's a testing plan for you or treatment plan for you, then we work with the providers, we work with doctors like Dr. Polly on those, on those treatment plans that are available to you. And then third, we look, we look at mitigating measures. Please wear a mask. We do ask that you sanitize your hands if you're out in public, you know, have a hand sanitizer with you so you're keeping your family, you and your family safe, washing your hands and just following those mitigating measures.
Hey Carla, would you, it's been a while since Dr. Polly's been here and would you just, just so the public knows, like, you know, there's, we've got a health officer and, and Dr. Polly and what, what the relationship is, just so everybody is kind of refreshed on that.
Sure. So at, at the Health Department, the role, of course, of our Health Department is to be, be a leader to watch over and try to take care of the health of Reno County residents. So with that, we do have medical consultants that help provide us with support, with information, with guidance on how we can do things better and how we can collaborate with those in our medical community. So Dr. Polly is our medical consultant for Reno County to help us through issues with COVID. So if, if a person is wanting insight on the medical side of things, he is our expert that we go to to help us through that guidance.
But that also includes anything like any medical situation like happened when I was growing up, polio, it would happen on measles or smallpox, which is not, but, but also those type of items, it's just, you know, we, we have that ability for other health conditions too.
He, Dr. Polly's been an extremely valuable resource for us to get that medical opinion, to get his eyes on what's going on, to understand what they're seeing in the office, to help us understand what the best treatment plans are for residents. And, you know, then that's just the small things of what he does. So I'm not sure what else as far as I can provide or what kind of update you'd like to provide on what you're seeing in the, in the clinic.
Yeah, please come. I kind of stumbled into this, I didn't want to ever be part of a pandemic, ever. Some of this relationship started just because I happen to be the first provider in this county who encountered a COVID-positive patient early on. And you quickly realize we're not immune to it in your, in your office with a sick person in a room that's not set up as a hospital room, thinking, I just got exposed to somebody who was recently in Wuhan, China, and how am I going to manage this and this community manage it because it's here and the avalanche is quickly going to start. So it started with simple conversations. In communities above 100,000 people, if I'm correct, you actually have to have a medical physician as the head of your health department, part of state law. My understanding is we're actually the biggest county underneath that threshold. So we kind of fall in with the counties of Western Kansas who really don't have any medical expertise with their health departments, they're really kind of just blowing in the When we came up to looking for a lead of the Health Department, I think you all were on it, I was on it, on the committee that interviewed and vetted Carla, I have no desire to be the head of a Health Department. I have my own job. There are some things that a Health Department cannot do without a medical consultant. A small example of that is yellow fever immunizations. So it's been of benefit to the community for me as a provider, having a working relationship and conversation here and I think a great benefit to the patients. On the, I don't think anything I've done is anything special. If there's anything even remotely special about me, it's because I'm from South Central Kansas. Honestly, it would be, no matter what they say, it's just the nature of growing up here, I think, and those things that I had no say on, but just by the influence of who I was around. But the benefit of having a medical consultant is you can do those things like yellow fever, there's probably a whole list of them that otherwise this county would not have access to or be able to do. Historically speaking, there always has been a physician consultant. I guess that also parlay's into doing childhood immunizations if I'm right. Without a medical consultant, we'd have to forego those offerings as a county health department. Full disclosure, I also didn't want to be a, a medical consultant. At first, but then you realize, I think it's just part of the role of what we all need to do during these times. With that, we can segue into whatever topics you want, but if I could, I could touch on the hospital. Part of staffing issues, no matter how much we pay, is we're in competition with everybody else. Texas, for example, is already, I don't want to use the word pilfering because that's negative, but they're, they are recruiting actively nurses and medical staff from other states, I'd say Arkansas included, those are the two most close ones, trying to pull individuals in because their problem right now is three to four weeks ahead of ours. So no matter how much we pay, we're kind of just upping the ante with other hospitals outside of our region who are trying to recruit them, but also locally. Most of our surrounding hospitals are critical access hospitals, which means they can't take care of COVID-level illnesses and they all come here. So we have a wonderful facility. Thank God we have a pulmonologist because prior to them being here, we would have been short-staffed in that scenario. Luckily, they arrived within the year prior to the pandemic. But also when you have honey, you attract everything else. So not only were we providing the best care to people of Reno County on a daily basis, the hospital's getting calls from Texas, Oklahoma, Missouri, states further away because at this point, they are beyond capacity and their heavy load does affect us in addition for us taking patients from as far west as the Colorado border within the state, but beyond. So it should be noted that a lot of that volume we see, I think Chuck gave adequate numbers, if we look at it in the context of Reno County citizens all, only, that's myopic. So they're taking care of more than just our county. I'd also say our, our number of deaths would be much higher if we didn't have that great care. Our mortality rate for COVID patients is actually lower than you see other places because of the care. Additionally, our hospitalization rate per outpatient COVID diagnosis is lower. People, much more expert to me, attribute that to the use of monoclonal antibodies and the early adoption in this community. For example, since, I believe it was July 23rd, we, my facility alone has administered 98 doses of Regeneron. On top of that, the hospital's done some, I just don't have those numbers, based on the current mathematics of the benefits of that medicine that prevented 27 hospitalizations. So if we were in a community that wasn't using those, the presumption would be we'd add 27 hospitalizations to the top of whatever number of hospitalizations we've had. That therapy, we just lucked out here because we're big enough to have it, but small enough to have the conversations. If you've seen on the news, Florida is having a state-run monoclonal antibody push out right now, that they're pushing out to the communities that are the most heavy-hit and Texas has also adopted that model. My hope is they can use those to offset some other hospitalizations and deaths. I think that's quite important to keep in mind because that's, those are the legs of the duck moving underwater when the duck on the top of the water is going smoothly. It's taken a lot of effort from nurses and staff outside the hospital setting to do that. It is not an inpatient therapy, that's been a, some fake news out there that it's overly expensive in, in inpatient therapy, it's actually an outpatient-only therapy. And the cost of the monoclonal cocktail is already covered by Operation Warp Speed prior to ever hitting. So they're taking care of more than just our county. I'd also say our number of deaths would be much higher if we didn't have that great care. Our mortality rate for COVID patients is actually lower than you see other places because of the care. Additionally, our hospitalization rate per outpatient COVID diagnosis is lower. People, much more expert to me, attribute that to the use of monoclonal antibodies and the early adoption in this community. For example, since, I believe it was July 23rd, we, my facility alone has administered 98 doses of Regeneron. On top of that, the hospital's done some, I just don't have those numbers, based on the current mathematics of the benefits of that medicine that prevented 27 hospitalizations. So if we were in a community that wasn't using those, the presumption would be we'd add 27 hospitalizations to the top of whatever number of hospitalizations we've had. That therapy, we just lucked out here because we're big enough to have it, but small enough to have the conversations. If you've seen on the news, Florida is having a state-run monoclonal antibody push out right now, that they're pushing out to the communities that are the most heavy hit, and Texas has also adopted that model. My hope is they can use those to offset some other hospitalizations and deaths. I think that's quite important to keep in mind because that's, those are the legs of the duck moving underwater when the duck on the top of the water is going smoothly. It's taken a lot of effort from nurses and staff outside the hospital setting to do that. It is not an inpatient therapy. That's been a, some fake news out there that it's overly expensive in inpatient therapy. It's actually an outpatient-only therapy. And the cost of the monoclonal cocktail is already covered by Operation Warp Speed prior to ever hitting the shelves of the facility that orders it. There is a cost to the expertise of the IV nurse and the IV lines and the IV filter and the IV fluids that go with it. So I can't say the entire process is free, but it's much less expensive than a hospitalization. If we want to touch on school, the stay and learn scenario, the stay and learn and actually the stay and play option, and I highlight option, was made available through the navigating pandemic paperwork that was published out by the KDHE and then I believe the Kansas Department of Education also in June. It's based on a study out of Utah that predates the arrival of the Delta variant. So it's likely would have been the Alpha variant. And it was done in a school setting that ensured adequate face mask use for all students. They also had a high-flow air exchangers in every room. In that scenario, it was determined after a watching period and collecting data that if children were exposed in class after, while wearing masks, et cetera, if you sent them back for the seven days of quarantine but tested them daily, there was a low enough transmission risk to additional kids downstream effects, meaning one kid after another getting infected due to the initial exposure, that it was reasonable to have those kids back in class because they weren't missing as many days and a negligible amount of students were converting positive. That data came out, had been collated by the states, including our state, published, and then all of a sudden, we started to see the Delta variant infect more individuals due to its higher transmissibility as well as more people of the pediatric age, which in the medical literature as well as the common news, you're seeing that the children's hospitals primarily in the Georgia, Florida region, Louisiana, Texas region, and then Northern Arkansas are being overwhelmed. By overwhelmed, I mean at or beyond capacity. The word we're getting from the pediatric intensivist there as well as the American Academy of Pediatrics is that it's to the point that it's affecting the care for kids with other severe illness or traumas, meaning they're so full, they're not able to provide what would be the standard of care for those scenarios. For that reason and the reason that it was clearly just made as an option, it was not a recommendation or even a strong recommendation from the KDHE, the health department specifically, it says you may work in conjunction with your health department. My recommendation, which is not a decision, my recommendation was it's of high likelihood that we'd be throwing the kids to the wolves if this virus that's coming this way is that much more transmissible and more likely to put kids in the hospital. We'd be making that decision based on old and outdated data. It would be very nice to have more information. For example, if we test kids here with traditional quarantine, can we find out what the transmission is with the Delta variant before we make a go-live on it? But then conversations with us and the majority of superintendents in the county, I can't say all because these conversations are happening on a daily basis while people are doing other things. We've also had some changeovers with superintendents. It was determined to not move forward with that yet. We have been collecting data. The best piece of data we have is a very small sample set from one of our bigger school districts that had an in-class exposure on the first day. In inconsistency with the modified quarantine recommendations of the health department, which is seven days of quarantine after exposure with the ability to get a test on the 48 hours preceding the end of your quarantine. If your test is negative, you can return to activities. That's a modified and loosened guidance based on the original 14-day quarantine that happened with COVID. We did see with those numbers, at least last night, I'm not sure if the data set's complete, was 5% of those exposed students did become positive on that last test. I can't say that's statistically significant or a very high-powered study as it's only one sample set. It's complicated by the matter of the exposure happened in the first week of school when the kids weren't in school all day. So admittedly, their exposure wasn't all that great or for that long a duration. So how much information we can take from that, I'm not sure. I'm glad it wasn't 80% of the students that were exposed were positive, but 5% is a real number. The other complicating factor is it occurred in a classroom in school where they're not using masks. So it raises the thought and the possibility that had they been wearing masks, could we have cut it that transmission to zero? It's going to be a way of a risk-benefit analysis. If very few, if any, kids in that kind of exposure are becoming positive during their quarantine, it would make sense to get them back in class and save those days. If a very high percent of those students exposed are becoming positive, you're entering this vicious cycle where you send them back to school for seven days, they test positive, but in doing so, they expose the rest of the class again or the rest of the school again, and now you're putting 20, 30, 40 more students on a seven-day quarantine. You can very much enter the scenario where you're testing the whole school daily because they're all on seven-day quarantine. Mathematically, depending on the rate of transmission, you can end up in a position where you actually lose more days of school because you have so many kids sick in isolation with COVID that the initial effort to keep them in class by not quarantining ended up being a poor decision. My general gestalt and simply opinion, so this is separate from any recommendation they have, my general gestalt and opinion is we can probably do a stay and learn safely, but we need to work out some of the kinks. One of the kinks I was discussing with one of the superintendents this morning is if we did send that class back to school for their seven-day quarantine, but of the 5% positive, they exposed the whole class again, and that exposure now results in another seven days of testing. And so we exercised our previous recommendation, which the Reno County Health Department adopted earlier than the CDC based on data and the CDC followed suit with, was in the classroom setting, as long as students are adequately masked, the threshold for a transmission-able exposure has shrunk from seven feet to three feet, meaning if they had masks on and they could at least ensure three feet, that wouldn't count as an exposure and therefore they wouldn't have to enter quarantine again. That would be a great workaround because when you have a higher-risk scenario of sending kids back to school post-exposure, we don't want to just put those other kids at risk. But if you can instill on that classroom to at least for that seven-day period, wear masks and ensure three feet, then you're less likely to have that continued domino effect. So the summary of this conversation is active conversations are going on and an active looking at the data. And I will say, I'm glad that this community's slow-playing it as somebody who has kids in school. So I don't know if you saw today, the Wichita School District reinstated mask mandate amongst all their schools. It's because they've seen so many, not just quarantines, but students who are positive. It's one of those situations where we may want our cake and eat it too, but we end up making a premature decision that results in some regret. I will say, last year, we were a little relaxed and a little more aggressive as far as getting kids back in school without mitigation measures because we didn't know much and we thought, well, our positive test rate's high, but it doesn't look that bad. I'll be honest, in retrospect, I think some of those decisions are the reason why we resulted in where we were in November and December of last year. I am seeing school districts in the aforementioned states, Florida, Georgia, Louisiana, Texas, that are closing down completely. That's the best way to make sure every single kid's not in class. So as the numbers this way are trending in the direction that those states are, my professional recommendation is going to be to watch the data closely and move forward with those things that are evidence-based in order to keep our kids in school and in school safely.
I think this is a lot more complicated than most people realize because the state legislature has done some things that hamper learning once you are out of school. The fact that you're, the school systems, if I understand this right, and I think I do and Carla, we discussed it yesterday, is that of all the COVID money that we spent for schools to get electronic and being able to do absent learning or in-home learning, they have limited that hours to 40 hours per student. That means, and after the 40 hours, then they come in and take some, if you continue to do that, you just lose state money. And I would certainly love to have someone say that's incorrect, but haven't yet. So there's lots of things. So you take a seven or 10-day out, there's a period of time that they're not going to have a relationship with a teacher and a learning system. That's just one of the complications, I believe. And so it is, it does get a little more complicated than just that situation. But KDHE and CDC has allowed the option for test and learn or stay and learn. And so I think that's a monitoring that's going to continue to go on, isn't that correct?
Yeah, I'll add to that, that part of the complicating, complicatedness of this is the testing in itself that's put upon the schools, basically the school nursing. One of our largest school districts in town, after weighing the evidence, effectively opted out of even exercising this option. So that wasn't a decision made by, when I say health department, I don't mean the health department. They don't see it as being feasible at this time to be able to test the number of students that will likely need tested in a way that, one, can get them back to class and, two, they can do it within the scope of their existing staffing. There was a grant from the state made available for mitigation purposes in testing that one of the school districts does have, and that's the one we're working with most closely as far as looking at the data, because they would be the ones to actually implement the testing for stay and learn, stay and play, if it seems reasonable and feasible and prudent to do so.
Their own money come to the state to help with those testings, but we don't, it still takes people to do that.
I will say, for example, yesterday, it came to my knowledge that a group of students from a class in a school that's exposed showed up at a facility to get tested to finish their quarantine. There has to be a lot of knowledge and communication between individuals. This happened to be a place where a provider was busy taking care of over 100 COVID and non-COVID-like illnesses during the day, and that provider has to be able to reach back in their memory bank to understand and remember the nuances of when to test people who are exposed that aren't sick. I'll be honest, that ball in the community probably got dropped a little bit. I'm going to be reaching out to that school nurse and those students today. But that just lets you know how complicated this is. We're having citizens who are working with the health department, the medical community, and trying to procure a test and appropriate recommendation. I will say, based on my conversations with my equivalents, whether in Sedgwick County or in other states, I really say we're way ahead of the ballgame here. And others really do look to Reno County and the health department in this regard to say, hey, they're doing it more right than we are.
And there's one other thing that gets a little more complicated too, and that's bookkeeping, because you have to keep, the way I understand it is, it's 10 minutes cumulative. And so that means if I go over and talk to you for a minute, I go back and talk to George for a minute, I go here, that all has to be documented to where it gets, if it's over 10 minutes, then it has to be taken and followed through, clear up to the state level. So it's a very complicated process. Daniel?
Yeah. Dr. Polly, appreciate you being here. I know you sacrificed some time away from your patients, so thank you. Just, I just have, I just wrote down a few questions from, do we, and some of this, I don't know if it's yours to answer or Carla's or Karen's, but do we know how many classrooms are quarantined in the county right now or kind of pending testing?
I only knew of one that has completed their seven-day quarantine testing. That's not all that are out there.
Karen said two. She knows of two.
Two currently.
One school district had what, 72 kids out?
See, I'm confused.
That was not a classroom.
Pardon?
That wasn't a classroom.
Wasn't accurate. How many?
Not a classroom. I believe that was sporting, extracurricular, activity-related, not a classroom.
Maybe I should ask how many students, how many students are quarantined right now?
I don't think that we would have accurate numbers because every day we have more cases coming in. So we wouldn't have accurate numbers as to how many students are. We can certainly pull that information, but we don't have that information just sitting here because we have several people working on COVID all the time.
I mean, I feel like this is one of the bigger concerns I have, and I know we've had a lot of internal conversations, and I appreciate the back and forth between Dr. Polly and yourself on these issues. But I mean, that feels pretty important to me that we know how many kids are quarantined at any one time. Is that something we could start tracking?
We can certainly track that, yes.
And I know, Dr. Polly, you said that the, kind of the, the non-statistical testing that we're doing to kind of informally prove out some of the ideas related to whether a full quarantine versus a, more of the KDHE program would work. And you mentioned the 5% positive test rate. Is it possible we could get a control group tested as well just to see if that's kind of a standard?
And that's, that's one of the many caveats to it is, would that student or students be positive? Did it come from the exposure or the control group? Could be the same. That was a proposal we kind of had in late summer for the school districts to be able to procure some testing and put it aside, kind of do just that. A giant, I have that protocol written. I don't think we'd need an IRV for that. That's an internal review board for any sort of study. Given that it's a pandemic and we'd just be looking at numbers that would be obtained anyway, either way through testing, I think could be done. A big wrench in that system is there's become a huge backlog in testing materials. Part of that is because of the increased demand from schools around the country to the point that my facility actually has been four weeks behind on delivery of our previous orders of the rapid nucleic acid amplification tests. We're now getting some, but it's affecting how we manage things clinically. We try to prioritize those for people who might qualify for monoclonal antibody therapy. But as a result, it puts us in a little bit of a scenario where we might not have the supply to put aside for testing of a asymptomatic cohort. But yes, I think that data would be wonderful, the data on how many students are in quarantine. It would be wonderful.
I think that probably with each school district having the option of doing some things, that maybe this would be a conversation on how to work out collecting this data and collecting the information wanted with the school, between the health department and the school district. So.
I'd say those conversations have been happening and that data collection's been going on, whether we, we being the health department and myself, or they being the superintendents, have been up to date enough with our conversations, seeing as we're all moving in separate circles that kind of overlap, maybe that could be improved upon, but that's all being monitored.
So what, so, you know, two weeks ago, you know, I mentioned, I'm just, I'm worried about the compounding effects of kids not being in school and the risk benefit associated with quarantining them. And we've been having a conversation privately about it and the, and again, it sounds like there's some movement and I heard that we're collaborating with schools and I think that's great. The thing that I was trying to get confirmation on two weeks ago, and I haven't heard it today, but I think it's there, it's, you know, I've had school board members say, hey, we want to make our own decisions on this. And then, you know, the health department and you, Dr. Polly, say you're working with the superintendents. So I just, I think some things changed the last 24 hours even, and I just want confirmation on where the health officer is at on this issue related to quarantines and whether the stay and learn protocol is at the absolute discretion of the school boards at this point or whether that decision is still being held by you. Because as of our conversation yesterday, I thought we were, you were still kind of making that decision.
So the isolation and the quarantine is what we do from the health officer standpoint because it's one of the mitigating ways that you control a virus, and we do that with several other viruses as well. several other viruses as well. This is not just this, and it's a proven, scientifically proven way to reduce the spread of a virus. So that is definitely what we are doing. As far as the stay and play, we have been working with all the districts. You know, in that stay and play guidance from KDHE, it says, you know, to work with your Health Department, that that's a recommendation. If they want to go out on their own and do what they want to do, you know, they can do that as well. We have been working with them, so we've been working multiple hours. We have had multiple conversations with many of them. So if somebody wants to go outside of that and, and not necessarily work with us and choose one of those plans, that's absolutely fine as well.
So from a quarantine perspective, if the school decides they're going to do the serial testing and just test kids daily and keep them in school, they wouldn't have to be quarantined?
They would still be quarantined outside of school.
Yeah, but they wouldn't, they, they could go to school.
Well, that's going to be up to the superintendent and to the principal that is required by law to keep them out of school. But we will continue to work with them on that.
Okay, but that's a change in, in your position from, from when we talked yesterday, right? Because, because yesterday you were of the opinion that, that that was-
I think our visit yesterday was very helpful in understanding, Commissioner, understanding-
I'm just, I'm trying, I'm trying to get, I'm just trying to get the specifics.
And isolation, person is test positive, they're isolated, right?
Mm-hmm.
And from then on, the school district can basically have the option of doing things, and, and the conversation is, is between the Health Department and the Health Officer and the, and the school.
I'm just trying to get the specifics, because I, I think it's confusing to many people, and I, and I get questions from board members. And so if, if what we're saying now is, if schools can opt in to, to the KDHE policy and the Health Department, Health Officer have no issue with, with that protocol, even if, I think the issue was if they were unmasked, they could not do that, right? That was the conversation we had yesterday.
So in the updated guidance for the COVID-19 prevention, which they want to keep kids in school, they also recommend that they do universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors, regardless of vaccination status. Now, several of our school districts have not chosen to do that, and we have worked and worked with them. We will continue to work with them, but we are trying to do the most prudent thing that we can have. So we have isolated and quarantined these students. We are working on plans if they want to continue to work with us.
Okay, so maybe I'm just not understanding, and I'm sorry if that's my fault, but the, the question is, do schools that, and there are many schools in Reno County that have decided they, they don't want to mask their students, do they have the opportunity to opt into the KDHE program?
They, they can do-
Yes, yes.
Yeah, they have, in the, in the partnership with county local Health Department, schools may adopt plans. This is guidance, it's recommendation from KDHE. They can do what they want to do.
Okay. That's, that's, because that's not, oh wait, that's not the conversation we had yesterday.
Maybe, yeah, have you seen a copy of this that the school districts have received about the KDHE plan? If you get a copy of it, if you haven't had one.
Well, I, I just, I just want to, I just want it on record, so it's, everybody's clear, so I don't get a call from-
Yeah. Maybe for my clarification, I might reword it, and I don't know who has the, it's definitely not a consultant, but who has the legal authority and the responsibility to request quarantine and isolation in the state of an infectious disease? I think your question might be, can the school district decide on their own who to quarantine and isolate, and does that supersede the recommendations of the Health Department? I don't know. My general understanding from medical school and epidemiology and the state understanding is that falls to the Health Department, who's responsible to the citizens of the county, but I'm not sure on that. I might advise us to defer to legal.
Well, I, I think the question is whether the Health Officer is going to defer to what the, the school boards want on this issue. And I don't think I'm unclear on, on that particular issue, Dr. Polly. I understand the Health Officer's authority to do, to quarantine. Just asking what-
We quarantine and isolate. There is testing plans in place, which we've been working with several districts. So we will continue to work with them if they want to work with us. If they want to move out on their own and, and do their own testing, we could, we can let them do that as well.
So what, what's the quarantine protocol at that point, if they do their own thing?
Well, that would have to be another conversation with that school district. But they would have to decide what they want to do for testing.
But what would you do if, if they wanted to do that?
I would work with them. I have worked with every single superintendent in this district.
And, and Kitty Cheese outlined this plan, so if they follow Kitty Cheese's testing-
I appreciate, I, I know this is a sensitive issue. I think, I think you're avoiding the direct questions, and, and that, that's unfortunate.
If there is a need for isolation or quarantine, then you will visit and-
It just needs to be-
And they'll be visiting with you, quite frankly, because they don't want to be in that position either.
This is, this is not clear. It just needs to be clear. You need to just be clear on what it is that you, that you plan to do, so everybody's on the same page. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you very much. And I want to, I want to say one thing, and I think the public needs to know this, is the tremendous amount of hours that our Health Department, the Health Officer, Carla, all the people at the Health Department have put in to try to follow these regulations, to try to understand them, and try to be fair, and do the best thing that's ever possible for any citizen. And I just think they don't get enough accolades for all the people that have helped and the people that do this. So we may, we may have our disagreements on how to proceed with protocol, but as a whole, I just, I really appreciate having the opportunity for good conversation and what you're doing. And I just, people need to realize that. Instead of hammering, they need to realize that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other words?
No, I, I think you're right, and I, I know it's, it's hard for me to say that when I give you a hard time, but-
I'm not talking, I was talking about lots of others, so.
No, I, I agree. You're right.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Polly, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is public comment on items not on the agenda. I would say that if you have anything to say about pro-mask or mask, con-mask, I don't think that that's probably an appropriate time, because we've discussed this many, many times. And so if, unless my commission members disagree with me, I appreciate you taking time, but if it's all about masks, let's, let's go on.
Well, is anyone here on a public comment item?
Yeah, so-
I guess we don't have to make that determination then.
Have something? If you please come up to the podium, state your name and your address, and limit your conversations to less than five minutes, okay? Is there any additions or revisions to the agenda?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I have two items. One, I was wondering if we couldn't move item 11 up to after the consent agenda. I noticed the district attorneys here also, I think it would be good for the flow of the conversation we've previously had. Is that possible?
Item 11?
Yeah.
Any commission requests and comments?
Twelve, sorry, twelve. Can't read Roman numerals very well. Twelve, sorry. Executive session.
Randy, you-
That'll probably be about a 30 to 45-minute discussion. And then we have people here for the health insurance, and then for the engine braking, so they would have to wait.
Is that-
To you guys.
Well, the engine braking's item six, is health insurance.
I would pick with the-
I think we ought to just move ahead as speedily as we can and leave the agenda alone.
Because I think quite a bit of the, of the agenda is maybe fairly smooth-running, quick-running. What was your other addition?
Yeah, I have a motion to make on an agenda item add for a, a future meeting, if that would be appropriate.
Okay, you want to put that under nine business items?
Whatever you prefer.
Okay. Because A and B, we notified, we won't be having A and B on here. Randy will tell us about that later, so, you want to put your motion there?
Sure.
Okay.
I move we approve the amended agenda.
You're second? I'll second. Further discussion?
Did you say between A and B?
A and B will be deleted because of Bobby White.
They're tabled until next week. They'll be at next week's agenda.
So nine A. Is that where you want me?
So, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Sellers, any revisions or additions?
No.
I have none. Randy?
Just the A and B, the two fire trucks are going to be tabled until next week.
Okay. So A and B on the business items will be tabled until next week, when Bobby White's available to be here, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
You're second. I'll put, item B is resolution 2021 day 16, and item C is resolution 2021 day 17, for your information. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank the efforts of the, the group north, northeast of the roundabout. George and Brad and Darren are here. They did some good work getting a petition together with, I think, 30 signatures or so to justify the work that we're doing on items, on item 6C. So I appreciate them being here this morning, and appreciate the commission's work on this issue for those constituents.
All right. More comments? Roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Okay, at this time, we will open the budget hearing for the purpose of hearing and answering objections relating to the proposed use of all funds and the amount of ad ver lorum tax for the 2022 county budget.
Is that a motion?
We're opening the hearing. So it would be a discussion. I think we need a motion for the, open the hearing, do we?
Yes.
We do?
Yes, sir.
Would you make that?
I would make the motion that we open the hearing for the county 2022 budget.
You're second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, open the hearing for the purpose of hearing and answering objections relating to the proposed use of all funds and the amount of ad ver lorum tax for the 2022 county budget. Further discussion? Okay, roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Does anyone have any discussion regarding the 2022 budget, county budget?
Chairman, seeing no one in the audience that wants to discuss the budget, I would move that we close the hearing.
Second.
Moving and seconded to close the hearing. Discussion? All right. Roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. So is there a motion to adopt the county 2022 budget?
Chairman, I would make the motion that we adopt the county 22, 2022 budget as presented in the agenda.
Is there a second? I will second. Discussion? We will have a roll call?
No. I'd like to say that, I think I mentioned this at our last meeting, but I'd like to reinforce it for our budget process, that I, I felt like our deliberations on the budget were very constructive. We spent two days talking to departments. The input of the county administrator was important, and I think we did our very best at coming up with a budget that is fair to the taxpayers. And I'm, I'm very proud of the work that we've done on this project to this point.
It was thorough.
It was good, yeah. Randy did good, good work. I agree with Commissioner Sellers. What, we had a, we had a couple items that were pending. Can you, can I ask for a report on, on those?
Go ahead, Randy.
The-
Let me just come up here.
Hey, where, did my motion get a second?
Yes.
Okay, so we're in discussion. Thank you.
Yes, you had asked about the, I believe, the tech plan from the register of deeds, and then the, if there was a plan from the district attorney's office on reducing the use of paper. The register of deeds did provide a report that cost some money along with the use of her part-time employee. The, and then she had to also ask for a full-time employee, but in the budget, it's just a part-time employee. The tech plan that she had had some costs, I believe, from $50,000 in technology costs that could be paid out of her reserve, her tech fund. In discussions with the IT department, we feel that it'll be better if the IT staff's a position that will be funded out of other savings in the general fund, changes that have been made in line items that would allow for an IT person to be a records management position that would take care of the digitizing of the records for help with register of deeds and other county departments, especially on the fifth floor of the courthouse, where many departments have digital records, so.
No, you said digital records on the fifth floor.
Well, make them digital records. Take the paper and digitize them, so, of what is needed. So in the long term, I think it's better to fund the position in IT with savings we have in the general fund with other modifications, one being some cuts to the emergency communications line item based on sirens that are the city of Hutchinson's responsibility, not Reno County's, and other savings. So that was kind of the tech plan that Michelle had sent, and then Mike and IT had sent to me. So that doesn't affect the budget unless you want to remove the part-time position from register of deeds, but what Michelle had asked for at different times was one for part-time for the digital records, digitizing, also to help general customer service in her office. And then she moved to a full-time request, so this part-time position that's in the budget could be just for helping her with other, with customers in the general office of register of deeds. other, with customers in the general office of register of deeds.
Do you think?
I personally like your idea of trying to do the digitizing through the IT department because it seems to me that all of our departments need to move more readily towards that goal. And to have it under IT just seems to make more sense than to have a person dedicated in one department. So I think your approach is very appropriate from my standpoint.
I agree. I, one thing I would ask is register of deeds, IT department, DA, or whoever, ask them for a, you know, some sort of summary of how much work they have to do on digitization and then, then ask for, even if it's a yearly update on what percentage they're complete. I think the, uh, opportunity here is to spend money on technology and people and then not really have any goal that's driving to some sort of success, so.
Yeah, we can work on that, on furthering that and then giving you guys updates on how it's going and the amount of records.
So my only other budget question was related to the, the increased request from this, from the, I think it was the city of Hutch or the collaborative of the, um, um, emergency, um, communications department. And that, my understanding is those increased requests did not go through the committee and that's supposedly a requirement in our agreement between the city and the county. And I'm, I'm just worried if we don't use the only lever we have to, if they're not willing to follow the agreement by us asking, I think the only other lever we have is to not pay until they follow the agreement.
And we are, um, Joe has reached out to the, to the city attorney to have, start having discussions about the agreement to make modifications anyways, but you're right. The plan for the expansion of the consoles, um, we couldn't find anything in records that the committee ever discussed that or approved or recommended that. It looks like it was maybe decided by the city and for whatever reason, and now it's in their budget because they are already in place.
Well, and what I told Randy is I don't, I don't want this to be, um, you know, punitive, but at the same time, I don't know what else we can do if we, if they're not following the agreement. And I really want them to follow the agreement. Like, that, if, if we don't do that, we're going to end up back to where we were last month, having a big meeting and trying to sort things out. So that's the whole point of those agreements, so we don't have conflict, we don't have surprises in our budget. So.
I'm in full agreement with you. I don't think those should be paid because they didn't follow the right rule.
The one caveat I would say is if there's a, a commitment, you know, and they say, yeah, we need to follow this and we are going to follow it in the future, then, then I don't know that, I would be opposed to paying it. But if, if they're not even going to commit to it, then.
Randy, since the modules that we're talking about are already in place, correct?
Correct.
What is your recommendation?
The county's portion's a little over fifty thousand dollars. I would maybe remove, if we can, remove that from the emergency communications line item, leave it in the general fund and then let, and then have Joe and myself have conversations with the city about, and let the county, the city council know that the county commission is not in favor of paying for that expansion.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Friesen that we weren't consulted, but on the other hand, a small number, four or five of those modules probably are in the county's best interest. So I'm not sure that we should say we won't pay for any of them. It just, it seems like to me that, uh, may, maybe your approach towards putting that fifty thousand in a pocket someplace until you and the city have a better understanding of this number that the county feels was needed. Because I don't feel that it's appropriate not to pay for any of them.
No, I, I, I agree. I just, but I think, I think it might be appropriate not to pay for any of it until it follows the agreement. And, and I think you're right. In the end, I think Randy and Adam will agree that certain portion is absolutely necessary.
Sure.
And, but that comes through the process, you know, and it's.
Okay, so, based on what you just said, do we have to move that money or is that movable by you within the budget?
I can move, it won't affect the adoption of the budget. It's an internal transfer between line items in the general fund.
I think there's general consensus to transfer that until you and the city work that out.
I'm ready for the question if everybody else is.
Okay, I just, I just, since you brought up the district attorney, did you have anything with regard to digitizing or this portion?
Do you want to give me just a second?
Are you back there working?
I was, I was asked to be here in case this question came up. Respectfully, it's going to be much more difficult for our office to go paperless than anybody could imagine. Um, first of all, we're controlled by KCJIS. And they are very, there's a very specific requirement or a series of requirements that we have to, we have to follow in order to be able to download criminal records and things using KCJIS. It would require, just off the bat, our own independent server, not just a place on, on the, um, county network. We would have to have our own server that nobody could access but our office or persons authorized by KCJIS. It would also require that every court, every one courthouse have reliable Wi-Fi, which at this point, it certainly does not. I don't know what that would cost. And it would, and it would require the ability of attorneys to make notes digitally without having to type, so they could, you know, have a Surface Pro or something like that. But more than that, it's just, it's, it's just not really feasible for the criminal division. We checked with Harvey County, Person County, Celine County, Johnson County, Sedgwick County, none of them are paperless. We are paperless to an extent. Our traffic division is paperless because it requires different considerations. Discovery is going to be a problem. Some of the discovery we received is just too, too large to, to put into a, to an email. We can't do that. A lot of the paper we can, we can scan and do a lot of the paper, but in my big cases, in my homicide cases and in, in other large volume cases, complicated fraud cases, et cetera, et cetera, it's very difficult to, to go paperless. What I can pledge to, to the commission at this point is that we will do everything we can to reduce our use of paper, um, as we have done, for example, in the, in the traffic division. But chances of us actually going paperless with our requirements are not, are not good. I've discussed this some with Joe and, uh, you have to understand a law office is different than, than, a lot of different functions within the county. And, and our need to have documents in front of us, just, just a few things, when we have to do an amended complaint. And, and there'll be times when I've got somebody charged with five or six different cases because they keep violating the law and I make a decision to charge them to the RICO Act or I'm making an agreement to charge them in one case. And if my staff doesn't have those, those paper files in, in front of them, it's very difficult for them to figure out what I'm willing to do with those cases. And we have issues with discovery. For example, even the sheriff's office, we get discovery differently from the sheriff's office than we get from HPD. HPD, everything comes over. Or we get all the body cams and all the audio, uh, the, the car cams and body cams come in digitally from, from HPD. They have a system where we just send a link to defense counsel. That system is not available in any of the other jurisdictions, not just the sheriff's office, but Haven PD, South Hutch PD, Bueller PD, all of those, those, those organizations don't have the, those same capabilities at this point. And I don't, actually, you know, frankly, I don't see South Hutch and Haven getting to the point, and Bueller getting to the point where they're going to have those, those kinds of abilities. And so for us, you know, we, we could say we're going paperless, but we're still going to have to receive everything for our charging documents in, in, in paper form and we're going to have to charge out in paper form. So there's always going to have to be a paper file. Even the courts that talk about being paperless are not actually paperless. I mean, they, they do everything computerized, but they walk into court and they've got books with, with papers in it so that they can make notes to later be transferred. So that, what, what we can promise is we'll do everything we can to, to reduce the paper and do as paperless as we can, but our office, my office, is not going to be able to go completely paperless. There's too many obstacles, so.
Well, I don't, I don't think the request was for you to go completely paperless. I think, I think the idea was to start a process.
And, and we, we sort of, I've had discussions with, with Mike about getting the, the Wi-Fi we would need to, to take notes digitally. I haven't talked about a, a, a separate server. And I would, I would be, I would be frank, be frank, but nobody who, who we talked to across the state and in any of those five jurisdictions had even considered the KCJIS, KCJIS implications, which, which, this first thing I thought of, but I think differently than some people. But, um, they hadn't even thought about those things. And there is a, there's a completely different review process for trying to go.
So none of, none of your documents are scanned today?
Oh, we scan. We scan a lot of our documents. We scan, um, all of our, all the reports are scanned into the files.
So where are those located?
Well, they're, they're paper copies that are put into the files and, um, in order to do, in order to do, uh, what you're suggesting, as far as having, you know, having just files with no paper in them.
I'm not suggesting that.
And I, I guess I'm not sure what the definition of paperless is.
I guess what you're saying is you're going to do what you can to save, to be as paperless and as efficient as you can be within the regulations and things that you have to have.
Right, and we'll ask, and we'll, I'll ask my attorneys to, to, to use as much of electronic medium as they can in their, in preparation of their cases. I can tell you that when I, when I prepare a case, I'm not going to prepare a case any way different than I've done the last thirty years. I've had too many issues in court where my, where, where technology has let me down. And I, I just can't, I just can't do it. So I mean, we'll, I, I would be happy to work with the commission and work with Mike and get as, as paperless as possible, but as far as going completely paperless in criminal division, that's not going to happen.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion? I think roll call. Longton County, twenty twenty budget.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda is the special districts twenty twenty-two budget. We'll open the hearing and ask for a motion to open the hearing on the revenue neutral rate hearing for the purpose of answering objections of taxpayers relating to the revenue neutral rate.
Chairman, I would move that we open the public hearing.
Your second?
Second.
No further discussion. We'll have a roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Now we are ready for discussion on, uh, the.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to close the, the, the session.
Hearing.
There's no one here that wants to present on this item. I would second the motion.
Okay, move to second to close the hearing. No further discussion. Roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
Chairman, I'd move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash.
You need happen, you have.
We have to.
We have another public hearing, another public hearing. The first one was a revenue neutral rate hearing. This one's the actual public hearing like the other budgets.
And we do not have to, uh, adopt the neutral rate hearing portion, right?
Correct. You just have to have a special hearing for the revenue neutral rate portion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd, uh, motion to open the public hearing for the, uh, item eight B.
Second.
Okay, move and seconded.
Mr. Chairman, item.
Discussion, we will, uh, have roll call.
Sorry.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Okay, now we'll have the discussion on the budget hearing for the purpose of objections or answering questions to the proposed use of all funds and the amount of ad valorem tax for the twenty twenty-two special districts budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'd motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the hearing. Further discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Now we will pick up the resolution twenty twenty-one days eighteen to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate for all Reno County fire districts and for certain sewer districts.
Mr. Chairman, I'd motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-one, twen- eighteen. Uh, no further discussion? Take roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Now I take a motion to adopt the special districts twenty twenty-two budgets.
So move.
Second.
Move and seconded to adopt the special districts twenty twenty-two budget. Further discussion? No, roll call?
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. Okay, now we go to business items.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask for a five-minute recess?
Yes, it's ten thirty, about ten thirty, so we will, uh, come back in five minutes. So we will recess for five minutes. Items is the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two health, dental, and supplemental insurance provider recommendations by Helen Foster, human resources director. We have that information in front of us.
Good morning. I'm here, um, on behalf of the benefits committee. My name is Helen Foster. I'm the HR director. And, uh, we have been working very closely with USI. As you remember, May, USI became our benefits broker. So, um, USI has worked really hard and we do have a representative from USI. This is Rick Beins.
Good morning. Thank you for having me.
And he'll be with me to answer any questions that you.
What's the last name? Beins. So. Thank you.
And then we do have Keaton Berger here too as well, and he is a member of our benefits committee. Um, USI has worked really close with the benefits committee in, um, looking at our benefits as a whole, our, our complete benefit package. Uh, health enrollment is due for renewal on October one for our new plan year. So USI, um, did work very hard with, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield to negotiate our rates. They were able to negotiate our rates, uh, with having a four point six four percent for our health insurance this year. Um, however, they did take the plan to market as well and, um, the market came back with a provider by the name of Benefits Management LLC, and they use the provider's care network for the doctors. And, uh, looking at Max Org for our. for the doctors and looking at Maxor for our PBM, which is our pharmacy benefit manager. And with that being said, that bid came in at negative 3.22%, so a 3.22% decrease in what our current plan is looking at for our fixed cost and for claims cost. So these are the two, the two side by side. So you see our current and then the renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield. One of the things that we did look at, and USI did help us look at our plan in the past, we were able to take on a little more risk. So our aggregate stop loss was raised to 125%, and our individual stop loss was raised to 125% from the previous 100, I'm sorry, 100,000 to 125,000. With the new provider that the Benefits Committee is proposing or recommending for us to go to, this provider is going to mirror our Blue Cross Blue Shield contract. So no disruptions as far as the contract, including on the formulary and our pharmacy benefit manager. With that being said, one of the things that they are encouraging us to do is to add the non-qualified high deductible health plan. The reason being because at the current, where we are currently, I'm sorry, where we are currently with our qualified high deductible plan, it is eligible for the HSA. Bringing the non-qualified, this plan would not be eligible for the HSA, and that's what enables the $0 telehealth. So with this plan, that would be a new addition under BML and Providers Care Network. That would also create to where we had talked about possibly bringing in an additional benefit of the fair market health. The fair market health gives us the ability to bundle. So for a certain procedure, we can bundle with a certain provider, and with that provider, our employee would pay $0 for a copay and for a deductible. However, the plan would see less in claims because that bundled payment would be a less payment hitting our claims. The dental, we did look at the dental. Blue Cross Blue Shield did come back with a renewal on that, and they matched what we were quoted with Delta Dental. With Delta Dental, we were looking at a drop in our admin fees, and that's where Blue Cross Blue Shield matched that. Do you have questions right now on the health benefits?
I don't have a question. I have a question on the first page.
Okay, sure.
I'm not super great at math, but are we looking at a spread there so the saving, kind of the, because we've chosen not to use Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're actually saving about 330,000? Is that right? Is that the way you could look at it?
Yeah, the total annual expected difference would be 131,639.50. That's based off of our current. So it would be a little larger than that if you look at our current because they did negotiate some of those admin fees down. So if we were to go from where we, our current plan to the Benefits Management LLC, we would actually go down 3.22% in our annual expense.
Don't I also read it up there? The actual cost savings is going to be 66,000 because we're paying 65,000?
Oh, for USI, yes.
Yeah, but we always paid for a consultant on a yearly basis.
We have, we have always paid for a consultant.
Commissioner Friesen, yes, I think the way you're looking at it is the 197,000 is an increase from the current, and the 131 is a decrease from the current. So you add those two together, and that's kind of that difference. Is that what you're asking?
Yes. Sorry.
No, that's okay. I just, it's confusing, but I just wanted to make sure essentially because we're choosing this plan this year, if you look at the alternative, this is about a $330,000 savings from the alternative.
Correct.
Speak to me about the dental part. I'm looking at dental renewal, Blue Cross versus Delta Dental.
So the first column you see is the original renewal that Blue Cross Blue Shield brought to us. With that being said, then they did come in and negotiate to match what Delta Dental quoted us on our, on our admin fees. So that's that $5.19 across the board. And then claims wise, they estimate that our claims, our estimated claims are a little lower than what Blue Cross Blue Shield would be. And the reason being because some of the negotiated pricing would be less.
So our dental in the past has been through Blue Cross Blue Shield?
It has.
I think this is a very good move. Delta Dental does a good job.
USI has worked very hard with us to make sure that our employees won't feel the repercussions from any change, you know? We want to make sure that the employees are still taken care of in the same means that they have been with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And that is one thing that's been very important to us in talking to Rick to make sure that we're making that move on not only the business side, but on the employees' behalf as well.
I think that's really important. I know changing health insurance plans is challenging for people, and then if the plan isn't, doesn't provide the same level of service, then it's really irritating, and it's not something you want to do to your employees. So it's good we have assurance that that's not going to happen. I know Randy mentioned there was some, it sounded like the Benefits Committee was in full support of this, but there were some staff that were concerned, and I think those are reasonable concerns. But if we have the commitment to take care of people's issues, then I think I agree with Commissioner Sellers, it's a good move.
And a lot of our employees' concerns are based on, you know, years ago, we were with Coventry and Humana, and that was very hard for our employees. So our longtime employees, this is a big move. Also, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield, everybody just likes the sound of Blue Cross Blue Shield. However, this network still has a national network, just like Blue Cross Blue Shield, so they can still get out-of-state services. That was one of the concerns that the employees had. The other was the change. Was there going to be a change in services? Was there going to be a change in the contracts? And there's not.
This is pretty seamless. I mean, most of the time you walk up to your provider and you give them the card and they process it and you never talk to them again. This is the same service you're going to get through this company, right?
Yes.
Got a bunch of extra paperwork to fill out.
Well, and to speak to some of the employees' concerns, the ability to get this better rate is allowing the county to provide the benefits at no additional cost this year. Is that not correct, Randy?
For the employees' cost. The recommendation is actually a small decrease in employee costs.
You know, to me, through the consultant and HR department, we've come up with a real benefit for the county as a whole.
And with that, our recommended was for us to reduce the rates, the overall rate by 3%. That would be reducing on the county side and employee side. Well, it would equal out 3% across the board, but it would reduce both county and employee rate.
When would this be implemented?
This would go, our health insurance and dental insurance are on October 1 plan year, so it would have to go into effect for October 1.
Would the Benefits Committee be willing to do a follow-up analysis in maybe three to six months to see how people are taking it?
Of how our plan is going? Most certainly, yes. I would like to do that.
Are we ready for a motion?
Can I add one more thing on our supplemental side? So with the fair market health, that's something that those individuals that are in the non-qualified high deductible health plan and the comprehensive major medical health plan, they can utilize those services. Because of the IRS regulations that surround our qualified high deductible health plan, that would not be something open to those individuals. So that would be those individuals that are maintaining an HSA, contributing, actively contributing, and also that $0 telehealth is a legislative thing. So right now, those individuals on that qualified high deductible plan can utilize that, but that legislation is going to end. The other part that I wanted to go over was just the fact that USI did look at our overall benefits plans. We have been working with Benefits Direct, which has been our provider for a long time, and we have looked at moving our plan year to be one plan year. We've had two different plan years between our health and dental and our supplemental plans. So this would move our plan year to be all October 1, which will be great for our employees. They will only have one open enrollment. But the other thing is to add some new benefit options as a whole, just to make our benefits package a little more enticing. So one of those things would be the critical illness plan. It's offered through Trustmark, no, MetLife. And then long-term care options, which are offered through Trustmark. And those are 100% employee funded, so that's not anything that the county puts a portion in on. It's just something that our employees would have the option to elect.
I'm a little confused. Are we combining the discussion of approving the new provider with the discussion of what the rates for the county and the employee are to be?
No, first you would do the insurance, and then we would approve the rates, the recommended rates.
Okay, then I would make the motion that we approve the 2021, 22 health dental and supplemental insurance providers recommended by staff and our consultant.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this plan provided by staff, recommendations provided by staff committee. To further discussion? Roll call.
You seconded it? Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes. The next motion would be to provide, to approve the rates. Is that right?
Okay, I'd like to have some discussion there and maybe ask Rick to help us with this discussion. If you go to the podium, please. Some of us that are older have had a lot of years of experience with health insurance, and very seldom do rates go down. And next year, we don't know what will happen. And so I guess I'd like to discuss the pros and cons of lowering the employee rate, knowing that next year, we'll probably have to raise it. You're a consultant on this, so I think you understand my question. Wouldn't it be better to leave the status quo so that we're in better shape next year to not increase as much?
So, no, I think that's a very fair point. And Randy and I and Helen have had numerous conversations about the current status of the Health Insurance Fund as it sits today and the methodology that's been used to determine the funding on a year-to-year basis for the employee benefits plans. That did weigh in to a lot of our conversation on our ability to make some adjustments this year. But I want the commissioners to know for sure that Randy and myself and Helen are continuing to have conversations about understanding the overall strategy of keeping that fund established at a certain threshold and making sure that you're not depleting that particular reserve that you have in that fund. I would say that I want Randy to weigh in as well, the adjustments that Randy and Helen have proposed, I think are very reasonable suggestions, and based on where we see our ability to help move the needle a little bit more because there's going to be a lot more levers to pull and a lot more strategy that can be put in place to help control cost now that we're partnering with BML and Providers Care and Maxor versus not having the ability to do that inside of an all-turn key that Blue Cross has. I think that we are going to see our claim spend over time to either stay flat or continue to go down. So you take that perspective into play along with having a very healthy reserve. I think the ability to slightly adjust the employees' portion down is a good move, especially when you're moving away from a benefit that I think that the county employees and any other member out there in the state of Kansas who's with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas just feels like that's, you know, something that they're giving up, even though we're matching benefits, for the most part, apples to apples. Their access to the providers are going to be the same. Their drugs that they're going to have access to are going to be the same. But Commissioner Sellers, you bring up a very good point, but the decision that's being proposed here, that thought process that you just had was taken into consideration. It's not going to be, you know, reduce it and then double it next year. That's not, you know, I would get fired as a consultant if that's what our overall game plan would be.
You better not say that.
There's a camera right there.
Yeah, no, I see that. You know, I mean, and that's where we had very open conversations with the insurance committee, with Randy, with Helen. We're not here to be in business to have, you know, a one-year client. Everything that we've been, you know, having open conversations about and recommending to the insurance parent community and Randy and Helen has been very straightforward in what our overall game plan is going to be. So...
So, and again, I think this motion was an email that we received. There is anything in the packet?
It's not in the packet, no.
Okay, and so your proposal is to reduce the employees' charges a 3%?
There's a 3% reduction in the county and the employer and employee rates, and that was based on, I think, the bronze. So I don't know if it's 3% for every single option. It's in general, is that correct, Helen?
It would be 3% across the board, yeah.
Okay, it is 3%.
And that still leaves your fund that we have inadequate?
In an adequate spot, yeah. Our overall conversations were very, we're being very mindful to the level of the reserve that we have and even in where we gave Randy options, Helen options that. Here's, you know, here's the overall funding that's needed for the current plan year. If you set it here, you could see your, the overall reserve fund maybe grow a little bit. If you set it here, it could grow a lot. And if you, you know, so Randy and Helen had all the information they needed on where we needed to set the overall funding, and then they made the decision on, here's kind of what we're thinking that we want to do.
What's your expected cost of increasing that out-of-pocket to 125 from 100?
Yeah, so that was a historical analysis that we did, and basically what we saw was, if we went back and looked at your historical large claim events, that happened through, I believe, June of this year versus all of last year, and I think all of the year before. It was either two or three years that we went back. If we would have been at $125,000 level, based on prior claims that had happened, there was a potential of savings of maybe like 100 to $125,000. Yep, thank you. So over a three-year period, if we would have had $125,000 stop-loss deductible in place, the three-year net savings was projected about $166,000.
Thank you.
And at 150, it was 288. So what Randy and I and Helen and the committee talked about is just taking steps over time to incrementally raise your stop-loss deductible, not just jump to the 150. We want to raise it to the 125 because we know there's opportunity there to win, evaluate, and then look at raising it either next year or the year after to 150.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining those issues. Thank you for explaining these issues. I would make the motion that we approve the staff's, staff and management's proposal to implement the new rate structure for employees and the county.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Approve the staff's recommendation for the new rate schedule for the next year. Further discussion? Not. Roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
I will thank the benefits committee and.
Do we still need to have?
Still have a couple other motions for the, the third one.
So we would still need approval of adding the third option for the non-qualified high deductible plan and matching the rates as the qualified high deductible plan on that one. That was the recommendation of USI because the county doesn't fund any part of the HSA. So there's not anything that changes between those two.
County's bets on this?
Not on the HSA. We don't fund any employee HSA, so.
Is that one motion or two?
One motion for that.
One motion for this. But motion would have to do with approval of the recommendation of the benefits committee to have a third plan option, the non-qualified high deductible health plan with the option for utilizing the fair market health. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Okay, now what's the next item?
Our third one would be to, for us to be able to use, utilize Delta Dental as our dental provider.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Recommend the Delta Dental as a provider.
And that part of these savings is included in your 3% discussion?
No, we actually didn't change the dental, but the dental will be going down. So in the end, we're building up some reserve on the dental side.
Okay, you're charging the employee the same.
Yeah, we did not change the dental rates. We love the dental rates the same.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Sorry. And the fourth one is adding the critical illness and long-term care options to our supplemental insurance package.
That would be a different motion.
You guys have packaged this all up into one.
I move that we approve moving to Delta Dental.
Motion on the table.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that?
Roll call on the dental, yes.
You just need a roll call on the dental?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Friesen, yes. Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Okay, and then you can move to the fourth motion, sorry.
I apologize, that was my fault.
Oh, that's okay.
Well, part of the reasons for having these different options is, for example, the fair market health could have been with Blue Cross also. So we had them separate, not knowing if you were gonna change from benefits management to Blue Cross, not twice.
We should have just packaged it into one motion ourselves, but I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, the recommendation of whatever Helen just said.
The supplemental package, including critical illness and long-term care.
Second.
That's good.
Thank you.
No further discussion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much, Helen. And the benefits committee, please, thanks for the work they did.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank our county administrator because if, if I recall, he was a significant supporter of changing consultants. And it sounds like to me that by changing consultants, we've had a very thorough investigation and have started a process with a, a new group that I hope we value for the future. Thank you, Randy, for doing that.
Next item on the agenda, the motion, Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The commissioners have worked on it off for a long time on the zoning regulations and legal commissioners are eager to resolve the matters related to Cwicks or zoning regulations. So I'd like to make a motion to take from the table the Cwick zoning regulations recommended by the county planning commission, place it on the agenda for September 14th. Also to direct staff to reconcile final thoughts of the commissioners and to propose to final draft of those recommendations, as well as draft any other appropriate resolutions that may be desired by the majority of this commission.
Okay.
And I'll send a copy of that to Cindy.
I think everybody understood that, didn't they? Mr. Sellers?
Is there a?
I'll take a second.
Can I ask for a explanation of the motion before I would second it? Or I guess I can't, can I?
Yeah.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Friesen, part of your motion, what is the commission's policy on September 14th gonna be on additional public input into the discussion of the commission at that point? Well, we, we, the planning commission had 30 hours?
Two or three days plus an extra.
Then on their new document that they gave us, they had many hours of public input. I think most of us have read a great deal of that on both sides of the issue. I, I don't mind if the commission desires 30 minutes on either side or something of that nature, but I don't know that I have a great desire to open this issue up for 16 hours of public input is my position.
I feel like I'm fully informed and ready to make a decision without further public comment.
So would your motion include the fact that we will not be taking additional public comment at that meeting?
For that topic, if, if you wanna offer that amendment, I would be happy to accept it.
Now you're getting into legal leaves that I can't.
We can handle it.
Okay.
I think if we're all in agreement, we don't even need to amend the, the motion really, unless you prefer it in the motion. Because we don't have to.
Mr. Chairman, how do you wanna handle this?
Let's just handle the motion and then have another motion. Randy?
That's pretty good. That way, at least the public is aware. I think you can handle it at the meeting, but it'd be nice for the public to know that it's not an open discussion.
It's either an open discussion or it's only a limited open discussion. Is that correct? You can make the motion when we get there, but this is for, for his motion to take it off the table. And you can read it again, if you would. Daniel?
Would be happy to. All right, gotta dig it out here. While I was trying to send it to Cindy already.
Thank you.
The motion is to take from the table the Cwick's, Cwick's zoning regulations recommended by the county planning commission and place it on the agenda of September 14th. Direct staff to reconcile final thoughts of the commission into a proposed final draft of those recommendations, or of those regulations, I'm sorry, as well as draft any other appropriate resolutions that may be desired by a majority of this commission.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Now, do you have any further thoughts on the?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that on the discussion of when on September 14th, since we've all had written verbal and email documents from pros and cons, that we take no more input from the public at that date, encouraging any communication that people might want to do to us individually before that date.
You second?
I'd second that.
I think that's an appropriate motion, myself. There's plenty of, of opportunity to provide that information to us individually, as you said.
You know, and, and it may be where the public waiting for staff's draft to come out on the agenda, avoid, I mean, obviously, the public can do what they want, but, you know, there's likely gonna be a final draft that hits the agenda. And just to avoid all of the, I mean, I think we've all heard all of the arguments. There's no need to make that again. If, if they see something in the final draft that they wanna make an opinion on, that would, for me, be a lot more valuable than hearing all the stuff that I've already heard.
In other words, kinda what you're saying is after we come up with discussion on any, anything that we agree on here, that then that final draft that we agree upon will then be put on the website and will be available to the public so that then at the next meeting, there would be potential for them for input then. Is that what you're saying, Daniel, basically?
I don't think that's what I was saying. I, what I'm, what I'm expecting is the staff's gonna, staff is gonna talk to the three of us and likely come up with the final draft. It's certainly subject to a final debate by this commission, but I wouldn't expect whatever that comes out of the commission on the 14th would be held over for further public comment. I think it would be decided.
And the personal comment?
So there's a period of Wednesday, Thursday, before the Tuesday meeting where our agenda's gonna come out and there'll likely be a draft. And at that point, the public can see what is likely gonna be the final regulation, just, just on the assumption that there's at least two of us that are gonna have some agreement and communicate that with staff. So it doesn't mean that there's not gonna be a robust debate following Tuesday, right? But I think, I think that the public would get a good idea of, of, of at least the majority of commissioners, based on that draft.
That would be necessary to have done plenty of time ahead for the next meeting.
Yeah, if, if staff can get that done early, that would be great. Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
All right. You need to reread the motion or anything?
I don't need to, I just need your call, the call for.
Yeah, we're ready for roll call.
Okay. Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Okay. County administrator report?
What I, I'm just gonna bring you up to date. I'm meeting with Don Ritten later this week to talk about sewer rates for sewer district 201 and 202 so that we can be prepared for a discussion with the commission probably in September to, you know, give recommendations about possible increases and moving more of the cost for the sewer districts, especially the bond, future bond payment and reserves to the user fee scenario, even though right now they're, those districts both pay property tax and user fees. So it'll take a little bit of work to figure out which way's the better method because there are some people that pay property tax that may not actually have that connection for the sewer, because they're in that district they're paying. And then there's people that may pay, be exempt from property tax, but they use the sewer system and are just paying a smaller user fee. So we're gonna try to look to see what's necessary to make it more balanced and fair.
And when will you have that to us?
Maybe the last meeting in September. And then my other, just to give you an update, the Arnold Group will be here beginning, beginning next week to start meeting with directors to talk about the, on the pay study, about their pay grades and how their job descriptions fail for the pay rates. But as individual department, just so they can, the Arnold Group can answer questions about any concerns that the directors have. That's all I had.
Commissioner Friesen?
Uh, yeah, it'll be brief. I had a request from a resident on, on 56th Street to add a compression braking sign near K61. I brought that to staff's attention and, and you guys can communicate with Randy on your thoughts on that. I'm, I'm gonna go tour the hospital, as I said, on Friday. Nick Gosnell of Eagle Radio mentioned the commission audio is a little hard to produce on his radio station. I've let Randy know and he's working on that. That's all I had.
Commissioner Sellers?
I was with the RHR director and communications director on Third Thursday downtown and handed out brochures on three versus five commissioners and thought people were interested. I, I found the obvious, that most people don't even know that we're talking about it. It's gonna be difficult to get that word out before the November 2 election. Excited that the bridge south of Nickerson is open and I plan on going out and traveling on that here in the next day or two. The, I, I guess, and I, I'm not trying to put Commissioner Friesen on the fence here. He made a comment yesterday on radio that even though our population has decreased 4%, he felt like we were growing economically. And at some future time, I guess I'd like him to explain his thoughts on that because I'm struggling with, if we have less people, how we can consider ourselves better economically off. So either in an email to Randy or to the commission as a whole, explain your thoughts because I don't, I'm very troubled by our loss of population in the county. It'll be interesting for me to see where that loss is coming from. I think I know, but, but we won't know, that, we won't know that until January?
Well, that would be on the precinct, but we should have more numbers pretty soon.
Pretty soon.
Census Bureau should be getting more numbers out.
I think it'll be interesting to see where our county's loss was. And, and I heard the Chamber of Commerce manager say that 52% of all U.S. counties lost population. So, you know, it's not, it's not a problem of just us, but we're responsible for solving our own issues. And so we've gotta work harder on that economic situation, I think. So that's all I have.
I've got one that follows a little bit along with Commissioner Sellers a little bit, and this is just a comment that's mine, an opinion, and kinda rattled the cage maybe. But to me, if the state of Kansas truly wants to keep our young families in Kansas, wants to attract families to Kansas, then they absolutely need to streamline the regulations and requirements and make it easier for childcare facilities to operate. and requirements and make it easier for childcare facilities to operate and even to start up childcare facilities. In my opinion, the state of Kansas is way over-regulating, overpowering childcare facilities. We need to make sure they're safe. I agree. But we don't need to over-regulate, require requirements that cost these facilities so much money they can't afford, therefore, to hire good, qualified people to look after the young children. I've been involved in one before I put it on social media. A small community in Reno County wanted to establish a childcare facility. When it came down to, and it was in an old school, not an old two-story school, but a fairly modern school, and the regulations and the paperwork was about yea-thick, and I just thought that, and they said, "We're not going to mess with it. We can't." If they would just lose a lot more common sense in this and not try to justify all kinds of people to come out and inspect and do things, I think we could have a lot better opportunity to have more childcare facilities. They spend so much money getting things that, in my opinion, are not necessarily needed when you hire good, qualified people to take care of the children. So I would agree with the chamber that childcare is important to attract people here. And so that's my comment regarding that. So that's all I have, except that I did drive over the bridge the other day south of Nickerson, and that is a really nice bridge. It's higher, it's arched a little bit more, and from what Commissioner Friesen said and talking with Don, that the 43rd Street Bridge is coming along good, too, and, and looks, appears that it looks nicer from the west end of that than what we imagined might look like. So with that, I would take a motion to go into executive session for... Can I request a motion? I have it written out here. I think the clerk might appreciate that. I think Commissioner Sellers or Friesen would probably make that motion if you would read it. All right. Request a motion from a member of the board to recess into executive session with the board's legal counsel on a privileged legal matter, that being the authority of the health officer to issue quarantine slash isolation orders and to, and the health officer's authority to pursue mitigation of the spread of contagious and infectious diseases. I expect the session to last not more than 30 minutes with no formal decision will be made. I request that District Attorney Tom Stanton and County Administrator Randy Parkeyin remain for the executive session.
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move and seconded to approve the motion as presented. Roll call, please.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Okay, let's start in about two or three minutes, shall we?